Welcome to the Janesville School Board Forum. I'm Mike O'Brien, serving as moderator for our discussion along with our timekeeper Laura Peterson. This event is hosted by Janesville's West Gate Corridor, James Dameron, leading businesses and individuals with economic development strategies for the west and south sides of Janesville. We're thankful for their, our sponsor Rock County First and Duane Severson, leading a nonpartisan civic group of, of uh, civic group that created citizens to ensure equal representation. Our thanks to Rich Gruber of CSR LLC for applying his public affairs skills to organize this forum. And of course, a big thanks to Alan Luckett and friends at JATV Channel 994 for televising tonight's forum. As you know, the Janesville School Board begins each meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, and that's a great tradition. So let's do that tonight. Laura is prepared to display the American flag. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. On behalf of West Gate Corridor, Rock County First, and the citizens of Janesville, let me say how grateful we are to have five candidates vying for three Janesville School Board seats. We have three incumbents and two first-time candidates in the race. Each election day will arrive on April 5th, and you will be in a better, better position to cast an informed vote for having viewed this forum. Here's a brief introduction of our candidates in alphabetical order. Incumbent Michelle Hayworth, who's brings business management experience. Amy Hughes, a local business owner who has worked in the school system. Incumbent Jim Millard, who has also worked in the school system and served as a local union leader. Incumbent Kathy Myers, a local area educator, and Audrey Smith, a local nurse. Welcome and thank you all for being here. All of our candidates bring unique experience and perspective, and they all bring their own sense of mission to the formidable task of education in today's times. We're grateful that they're willing to step up and serve. Before we begin, I'll review the structure for the forum. Each candidate has agreed to the rules in advance, although none have received any questions in advance. The questions are based on community submissions and recommendations from West Gate Corridor organizers. We hope to cover the most relevant topics for the citizens of Janesville. And if we've missed anything, well, our candidates may cover additional points in their closing remarks. The order for speaking will begin in alphabetical order and then rotate with each question. Each candidate will be given two minutes per question and three minutes for closing remarks. As moderator, I'll ask a question with up to two minutes allowed for the first candidate to speak, and the next candidate will have up to two minutes to address the same question and so forth. We'll move through as many questions as we can within approximately 90 minutes. While each candidate is speaking, what you'll see after 90 seconds is a cue from our timekeeper. Laura will hold up a 30-second notice to give each candidate an opportunity to summarize their thoughts before the two-minute deadline. That'll be followed by a please stop sign, and there that is. Thank you, Laura. I appreciate that. So, um, so let's proceed, beginning with the first question that we posed to incumbent candidate, Michelle Hayworth. Michelle, tell us, why are you running for school board again, and what do you hope to accomplish?
Good evening. Um, I am Michelle Hayworth, and I am running for school board again. This is my third term, hopefully. Um, I am a current, I'm a parent of two students in the district right now. My daughter graduated, our oldest, our third, uh, we have three kids. Our oldest graduated in June from Craig High School, so we have two here still here, one at Craig and one at Kennedy. And I'm running because I want to be, um, a part of the education that they are getting and, and be able to get behind the scenes and be a part of shaping that. Right now, we're in the middle of hiring a new superintendent, so I want to be, um, engaged with that person who's leading our district. I'm also a very engaged parent, so I talk to a lot of the teachers. Um, I'm involved in Craig PTO, CATS, CATS boosters at Craig, and I'm an Elevate mentor, uh, for the Craig program. So I feel like I bring the perspective of a parent. I know what the kids are learning. I know what they're doing. I talk to the teachers. I feel like I'm really in tune with that, so I feel like I bring that good perspective. What I hope to accomplish is making sure that our students get the best education and we prepare them for, um, life after school in Janesville. So whether that's, um, going on to college, whether that's going on to military, a job, whatever it is, I want to make sure that we send them off confidently with the tools that they need to be successful. So we need to focus on closing a lot of the learning gaps and that kind of thing. So that's why I'm running again is because I am passionate about the education of my students and all the other students in the Janesville School District.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Um, now we're going to Amy Hughes. Same question, why are you running for school board and what do you hope to accomplish, Amy?
Hi, my name is Amy Hughes, and if elected, I will work to ensure academic excellence to best prepare the students for life, financial accountability and transparency, and continued and increased parental involvement in their children's education and learning environment. Right now, Janesville ranks 404th out of 421 districts on the DPI academic scorecard, and I would like to help look into ways to bring us up out of that bottom 4% in Wisconsin and really make Janesville a place that people want to come to and want to send their children to school here and to best prepare the students for life after school. Whether it be military, the trades, right into the workforce, college, I really want to see them prepared the best that we can prepare them. And then financial accountability and transparency, just really looking into the budget, seeing how money's coming in, how money is going out, and is it all in the best interest of the students again? And then, uh, just making sure parents are heard, being able to voice their opinions, what, you know, have a say in, in decisions that we make to the degree that is feasible and responsible. Um, I'm a lifelong Janesville resident. I've raised four children here. Three have come through the district. One is still in high school at Craig. And I'm a small business owner with my husband Ben. Um, we own Hughes Custom Carpentry for over 20 years. And I've been a school district aide for about 10 years and a church treasurer and lots of involvement in the community and, um, church events and ministries and outreaches. And I would like to take all of those strengths and experiences and the relevancy of having a student in the district right now to really help Janesville do what I can to make decisions that are all in the best interest of those students and bringing us up out of that bottom 4% and really making Janesville a proud place. I really love it here and I want people come here. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Amy, or Jim, we're posing the same question to you. Why are you running again and what do you hope to accomplish? Jim Millard?
Thanks, Mike. Um, my name's Jim Millard. I am the vice president of the Janesville School Board. I worked in the district for 27 and a half years, uh, as a custodian and then as a delivery person. Throughout that time, I would, I've been on many, um, different committees. I was on the superintendent's advisory committee because as they had mentioned that I was a union representative. I, um, handled a lot of contract negotiation, things like that, a lot of grievances. Um, the, I, I don't really think I can say for a fact, um, what I want to get done because, I mean, I hate to go in with a preconceived notion. As Michelle said, you know, we are trying to hire a superintendent. We got really lucky with the last one, and I'm hoping we get as lucky with the next one. And, uh, as Amy said, we are, we do have to work on our report card. We are, though, we have a new math program that's, now it starts from, well, from first grade through 12th grade, and it doesn't change like the other math programs did, so I'm sure that's going to help. Um, I guess that's it for me. Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you, Jim, and thanks for serving. We're posing the same question to Kathy Myers, incumbent Kathy Myers. Would you, um, respond to why you're running again for school board?
Sure. Thanks, Mike, and thank you all for, um, hosting this tonight. Um, so I'm Kathy Myers, and I am the president of the Janesville School Board, and I have been on the school board for, uh, nine years at this point and running for one more term. I am a high school English teacher. I have 28 years in public education, and I'm also the mom of two, uh, well-educated adults right now. And, uh, I'm going to be a grandmother this summer, so I am ecstatic about that. Um, I, I am running, first of all, because I really believe in public education, and I find it incredibly important. I have dedicated my life to it. Uh, I think I, as a teacher, I, um, have some perspective that, uh, to offer on our issues that, um, uh, perhaps some of our other board members may not have. Uh, I think I understand the complexity of public education and the responsibility of it. Um, I, I also am running because, you know, we, we have promises, um, and I think they are incredibly important. I think they are something that we are always going to have to work on. And, uh, but, you know, things like knowing all of our students by name and strength, by creating, um, a, an environment of engaged learning, developing those relationships, by, you know, recruiting and, uh, a great staff and keeping great staff. So I'm running, um, because of those sort of things. And, um, and I just, um, really want to thank you again for this opportunity, and I hope I can earn your support.
Thank you very much. And we're going to Audrey Smith now on the same question. Why are you running and what do you hope to accomplish, Audrey?
Yes, thank you, Mike. So my name is Audrey Smith, and I want to tell you a little bit about me and my roots. I'm a lifelong Janesville resident. I graduated from Craig High School and Blackhawk Technical College. I am married to Jerry Smith, and he's a small business owner here in Janesville. We have 12-year-old twins in the Janesville School District. I am a professional registered nurse, and every day on the job, I use compassion, critical thinking skills, science, in something called best practice. I use that for one patient or groups of patient, and I use it in an emergency or for the long term. And what I want to do is take those skills and apply them as a board member. I am also a huge advocate for children with special needs, and this is because my son started in the special education program at the end of first grade. 12% of the students in Janesville School District have disabilities, and I could be their voice on the school board. My passions are really what a nurse thinks about. How are the kids doing physically, emotionally, and mentally? And again, the DPI scorecard really helped prop me to make a run. Um, you know, we are ranked 404th place out of 421 districts. And before this year, the year before COVID hit, we were in 395th spot. So my vision to be on the board is like two things. I want to help bridge the emotional stress and barriers that the kids have endured the past two years. And I think a school board should find resources and interventions and break down barriers to learning. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And we'll, we'll start with Amy Hughes on the next question. And that is that, um, tell us, what do you see as the most important challenge facing the school board in the next year? And what would you propose to address this challenge, and why do you recommend that solution?
I think, again, trying to get Janesville up out of that bottom 4% and making us a, a district where people want to come to and where our kids are really prepared for life during school and outside of school. I just would look into curriculum, um, qualified teachers, learning environment, uh, the schools. I'd talk to parents and teachers and administration to find out, like, ideas that they have, what they see in their students and in their parents, um, parents for their children, and what kinds of ideas they have that, you know, learning gaps that their children have and ways that we could help them. Um, I think it would just be working together on the board and with the superintendent to really work, just work together, look into all the, all the problems and solutions and resources and finding the best ways to, you know, like Jim said, with the curriculum or different, the, the math curriculum. I know the board already is looking into ways to increase the learning and increase the expectations, and I do appreciate that in Janesville.
All right. Thank you very much. Now we're going to Jim with the same question regarding the most important challenge. What you would propose to address the challenge and why?
You know, that's, that's a great question. Two years ago, I'm sure we wouldn't have seen the challenge of COVID-19. So I hate to say that, that I can look into my crystal ball and see a challenge. As Amy said, you know, um, we need to get our, our state report card up. Um, working with the new superintendent, making sure that he has all he needs to make the district, to keep it on the same journey that we've been going. We definitely don't want to go backwards. Um, oh, let's see, and this, this sounds very, um, generic, but I, I don't mean it that way. We have to make sure that all our students are, um, ready to go to the next grade or to go to college, not just, um, the ones that are excelling. So, um, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jim. Going to Kathy Myers with the same question.
Sure. Thank you. So I mentioned the promises, um, in my opening or with the last question. And, uh, achievement is one of those promises, and, um, so it's a, but it's always a promise, you know, no matter COVID or not. I mean, we have really, um, struggled because of COVID. And as a teacher myself, I saw it in my own students, um, who were under the same conditions as, uh, we were in Janesville with, you know, every other day, like in the high schools and, um, you know, lots of disruption and some were virtual. So, you know, we've made some good movement on this actually. I, in the last year or so, we've taught, done a lot with new materials that, you know, that were mentioned before. Articulation and vertical, uh, vertical teaming, um, progress, which is incredibly important. Um, I am hoping and I think, I really do believe that some of our measures now will help, uh, improve in achievement and help close the achievement gap, which is also, uh, another important, um, problem or issue in our district. Uh, we have, um, obviously, one of the things that makes me really proud of the Janesville District is all of the choices that we offer our students in, in, you know, helping them decide or figure out what works best for them or where their interests might lie. And obviously, I, I'm really proud of that, and I think that those sort of things are going to be incredibly important, um, to helping our students achieve and prepare for, uh, college or work or military or whatever they want to do once they leave us.
All right, great. Thank you very much, Kathy. Audrey Smith, most important challenge? What you would propose to do and why?
Okay, thank you. So I kind of think there's four challenges that the Janesville School District faces. Number one is the emotional stress the kids have had over the past two years. Number two is the learning gap, the learning that has been lost. How do we make that up, or do we meet the kids where they are right now of where they're at before they move on to the next grade level? Um, our declining enrollment is a huge challenge and also teacher retention. Those are the four things that I feel are most important. How are we going to solve them? The best way is the nine people collaborating on the school board who come from diverse backgrounds to bring all their life experience and knowledge together to work together. I think with the Esser funds, we can apply it there. Again, my skill is I write care plans for patients, and so I want to bring that skill and apply it of help writing policies and making change on the school board. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the, um, the third question, we're, we're going to be starting with Jim, and that is...
Can I answer that one?
I'm sorry.
Can I answer that one?
Michelle hasn't got to.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, Michelle, yes, yes, you can. I, that, my mistake. I apologize for that. Um, Michelle, the most important challenge and what you would propose to address it and, and why you recommend that solution?
Thank you. Uh, definitely closing the learning gaps because we all know that the scorecard, the DPI scorecard, is what realtors may look at, people who want to move here, businesses who want to come here, families that want to move here and put their students in our district. So we need to get that performance up, and it's going to start with accountability across all levels, up top to bottom. I'm actually, um, I bring my business background and I write the superintendent evaluation, um, document for our board each year. And so we're weaving in how to make that even more, um, robust so that there's more accountability at the top and that flows through. So I would like to see us use the funds that we have available, Esser and, and others, to improve student programs. Uh, we already have a lot of programs for our students. We've got, you know, programs for our students on the, you know, high performing and, and, um, I want to see more focus on those at low performing. Um, you know, being a mom, I know that a lot of homework isn't necessarily always given, and then the kids get to high school and they don't know how to study. So I want to see, uh, some study programs put in place to teach our students how to study and get ready for, um, college and, and life after that. So, uh, we're doing a lot of good things with, um, standardizing our curriculum and getting that. You know, we would have 27 different math curriculums before. Now we are down to one. We are seeing really good results with that. Um, I also want to see the funding go to the social and emotional, um, treatment of our kids and get more people servicing our students that way in our district. Um, I feel like being, you know, um, the masking and the virtual learning has caused a lot of damage, and I think we need to repair that and meet the students where they are and bring them back up. And that's definitely what I want the focus to be is on the students. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, and I apologize for missing you. We won't forget you again.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. We're, we're going to Jim on this one, and this is, um, Jim first. As you know, the current, current school board is searching for a new superintendent of schools. And what qualities would you be looking for to select the right candidate for the job?
Well, that's a great question, Mike. First, I'd like to mention that, um, Kathy had mentioned she's the president. I'm the vice president. Michelle is also our board clerk. She did not mention that, and I just wanted to say that. Um, we, in looking for the superintendent, we've, we've been searching a lot of ideas and things like that, but I think for myself mainly it's someone that can make sure that he can talk to everyone on any level, understandably, and that, um, he, well, does a lot like our superintendent does now. He goes out to the buildings. He belongs to the city committees. He, um, actually started his own group, Rock County Superintendents. So when this COVID hit, they actually would talk amongst each other to see, okay, what you're going to do for FIAET. Are you going to mask? You're going to unmask? Things like that. He, he got people together, and that's something that has to keep on going. And also, like I said, bringing the community back together with the school district was, was, was a hard lift, but he did it because we actually passed the referendum and during COVID. I mean, that's an amazing feat right there. So you'll see, I don't talk a lot, so that's, that's good. Thank you.
All right. Thank, thank you, Jim. And now we're going to Kathy Myers on the same question regarding superintendent of schools.
So I would have to echo what Jim said about, um, Superintendent Poofall. He has been a tremendous, uh, leader for the district, and I would like to, uh, our next leader to emulate a lot of his same qualities. Um, you know, Steve, I, uh, really great guide involving COVID, um, you know, issues and helping the district turn on a dime and change things. And what I really like about it also was the metacognitive activity that happened afterwards as we sat back and he sat back and he analyzed, um, you know, what worked and what didn't work and how we, uh, uh, could better address the needs of our students. Um, you know, and I think that that has been greatly what has influenced us about trying to make sure we keep school open. Um, Steve is an excellent communicator, um, and I would like to see that in our next superintendent. I want a community leader, um, and, uh, to also make sure that, you know, everybody understands the relationship between, uh, all of the factions of the city and its school district. And, and obviously, I, I'm looking for a very strong academic leader and a fiscal leader as well because, um, the needs are great and the resources are, um, oh, not always so great. So, uh, we need someone that thinks out of the box and, um, you know, and, and is prudent fiscally and, but also has high expectations, um, for our district.
Very good. Thank you, Kathy. We're going to Audrey Smith, the same question regarding qualities.
Yes, thank you, Mike. Uh, so I had talked to Dr. Schulte and Mr. Poofall regarding my son in special ed over the years. So I've met and spoken with both of them and see a big contrast and a difference of what I think the next superintendent should be like. And I definitely can pick out some qualities that I think are very important. The number one is transparency, to just really be honest and open about what's going on with the district or personally your child, and just to be a good leader. I mean, they are the CEO of this district, and they, actions speak louder than words. And so, um, when I see somebody who's actually doing what they say they're going to do, that actually means something, and I actually can compare the, in contrast, the two superintendents, since my kids have been in the school district, and those are the qualities. And I'm very excited, you know, to see with this board, um, you know, how they interview the next superintendent and excited just to see how this district will, you know, continue to move forward. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right, Michelle Hayworth, the qualities.
Thank you. I was part of the hiring board for Superintendent Poofall, and as soon as he walked in there, we knew he was the one that we needed. He exuded a servant leader, um, attitude, and that is exactly what I'm looking for in the next superintendent that we are going to be hiring. I think, feel like a servant leader would bring the team along, um, act very humbly, but is a very strong person. So, uh, they also need experience in closing gaps, learning gaps. So I'd like to see that someone come with strategies for doing that and helping to get this report card up. Definitely a relationship builder, one who drives accountability and is also transparent. What I love about, uh, Mr. Poofall is he is in the buildings every Wednesday. He wouldn't even meet with us on a Wednesday, any of us board members. It's off limits on Wednesdays. He's in the buildings, at least three buildings every Wednesday. I know that the teachers love it. He'll just walk into a classroom. Um, so someone who has that relationship with the teachers and is right there willing to talk to them or the students. He'll talk to the students, read to the students, whatever it is. The, I want someone who is out there and engaged with the staff and not just at the downtown office. But I also want someone who's going to bring that three- to five-year vision for how to take us to that next level. So I don't, I want someone to come in with some ideas already, you know, sit and kind of learn everything, but also have a vision on where we could go and new ideas to make this more efficient, more successful.
All right, great. Thank you very much, Michelle. And now we're going to, um, let's see, um, going to Amy Hughes on the same question.
Yes, thank you. Um, yes, with the superintendent, I don't know if he, he or she will be hired in before the new board. You know, if the board may change if I get on there. But I would like to see a lot of the same things everybody has mentioned. I, I think as a community and people on the board, we would all like to see experience. Does the person coming in know what, you know, have the, the knowledge and experience to lead a district and to bring us up to where we need to be? Um, the communication and relevance, relationships with others, like Michelle said, going into the schools. I really think that's important. Working with the board, working with the other administration in each school, um, just that relationship factor that someone would need to have and just the commitment to high standards and excellence. I'm, I'm sure whoever comes in would want to see our district do well and would be bringing lots of ideas and creativity and, and want to work together to bring our district to where it needs to be.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. So on our next question, we're going to Kathy Myers first off on this one. And Kathy, several of you have documented the fact that our school district is, uh, has declined lately and that it's ranked pretty low, and how should the Board of Education address this situation?
Well, um, this is a, a big and multifaceted task. Um, there's, um, obviously, just the fact that we are, um, like, for instance, at the high school level um, in class every day, I think we should see some, um, progress, actually. It, I, I taught under those same conditions last year, and the, the impact on student learning when we came back to school this September, actually, August, um, was, um, it was terrible. It was really... was, it was terrible. It was really rough. And yet, within a semester, I was able to, with my classes and on my department, we were able to really see a lot of progress with students. So things like that will help. I mean, I think that a lot of stuff will iron out, not, no. I don't think we're satisfied with the way we were pre-COVID. So I'm really looking forward to seeing us use things like the Essar funds and, you know, and some of the other resources that we have coming to us for tutoring after school, for enrichment programs, for mental health services, which I think will be very important as well. And, you know, as far as our student support services are concerned, and the Jamesville School District does provide a lot of mental health services already. So I think that those things being well utilized will help a lot. I, like I said before, I'm really glad to see that we've got some more vertical alignment with our resources and our, you know, and our expectations and activities. So I think that those kinds of things are going to help out a lot. I see my job as helping to facilitate that. And I, you know, I want, obviously this all ties in also to the last question. We need a superintendent that understands those things as well.
Indeed. Thank you very much. We're going to Audrey Smith with the same question.
Yes, very complex question and how to solve this. I mean, all of us are probably going to say using the Essar funds. And then what do we do as a board, the nine of us collectively with input from students themselves and teachers and how to conquer this? Something that I've learned that's out there that could be a best practice is where teachers spend the last five minutes of their class asking the students to log on their Chromebook and complete two questions. And the teacher gets real time answers at the end of that teaching time to know if they should move on the next day with the next part of the lesson plan. Or they see that, that the curve is not up there at 80%, which means we go back at it tomorrow. That is something that is out there that I've actually witnessed in a school and seen in action. And that is something that I would bring to the table of having these five minute drills at the end of every class to, to meet the student where they are right now, because instead of making up for two years of lost learning. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle Hayward, what would you do?
Thank you. So while the decline in population is not unique to Jamesville, that's nationwide. The decline in the academic performance is more unique to us. Our large districts comparable in size to us who are definitely higher than us. We're meeting a few expectations. So what I would like to see is more small group learning to really focus in the areas that the students need. A more updated curriculum. Dr. DeGraff's team is working on this diligently. We've got a whole plan to update. We just did language and we're working on biology, math is done, to make sure there's consistent curriculum as the students move through. Tutoring and study help, accountability from the top down. So the superintendent's metrics flow down to the administration, flow down to the principals, to the teachers. And everyone's driving to the same goal and has that same end result in mind. Lower student teacher ratio. So if we can get more funding and more people, which that's hard to find, we are, it's a hard time to hire anybody right now. But making our district as competitive as we can be to reduce the student teacher ratios and get more individualized learning. And then sharing best practices. If you watch board meetings, you'll see some presentations by teachers and they'll say, something, you know, they'll talk about a program that they're doing in their class. You know, Audrey, I love the one that you just mentioned. But then let's share that out. Let's share out those best practices because they, obviously they have been effective. So just more way, more ways of sharing that learning is, needs to be our focus. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Hughes, how would you address the situation?
Yes, I would like to see continued and increased involvement in what things that we already are doing as a district. Like meeting the emotional and social needs like was mentioned, but I would like to see that increased. I know over the last couple of years, there has been an increased need for that with the students. Again, looking into the curriculum, talking to teachers and parents, finding out what their particular student and child needs and what ideas they have for the classrooms. I'd love to see smaller class sizes, smaller teacher to student ratio, if that's possible. Like Audrey mentioned, just making sure those kids are ready to move on before we move on. Whether it's each day or week or month or, you know, lesson plan, that those kids are really understanding and learning and maybe bringing in more staff and aides to help the ones that are struggling or after school programs and tutoring to help those kids. I, I think there's a lot of creative ways that we can go about, you know, looking at other communities as well to see what they are doing and what works well for them. And I think it's going to be a, a learning curve, trying to, you know, everybody for the last couple of years, trying to get back to where we need to be.
Thank you. Jim, would you address the question?
Thank you. Yeah, I guess, I think the, I think we've shown progress on in-person having the kids back in school. I know my grandson would do anything just to be back in school and see his friends. And I know that, that definitely helps their mental and social aspects. As they mentioned, the Essar funds, of course, for tutoring and for mental health is also an important thing. Input from all staff. Teachers are very important, but all staff, custodial maintenance, food service, secretary, clerks and aides. A lot of good ideas come from all staff. And the lower teacher, lower teacher pupil ratio definitely would make a, a difference. And I think as, as Michelle said, best practices, it's wonderful to see teachers come in and do their, present their program to us and show how proud they are and show how the kids are actually buying into it too. And that just makes a world of difference to us and our community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. We're going to Audrey Smith first on this next question. The school district has received a significant sum of money for pandemic recovery. The use of these funds is relatively unrestricted. So how would you believe the money should be used?
Great. Thank you. So a lot of the answers will go back to the Essar funds and how we are going to use them. Two things is that I feel are so important is the emotional stress that the kids have endured. For instance, my son's in special ed and has emotional needs and my daughter does not. But yet they both have suffered over the past two years. How do we treat each of them in the school district for what they have gone through? And then the lost learning, all the things that were mentioned before are great ideas. And we have to expand on those and work with, you know, a new superintendent to, to figure out what is the best way to move forward. And it'll take a big team, a lot of input to really put our best foot forward and to bring Jamesville, I mean, in a higher ranking on the DPI scorecard. Again, that's a huge focus, you know, and why some of us have chosen to run is we want to make a difference and bring that scorecard up. Thank you.
Thank you, Audrey. And now we're going to Michelle with the same question.
Thank you. Twenty percent of the Essar funds does need to be allocated to learning strategies. I feel like it should be way higher percentage, but luckily we did do a survey and it was presented to the board Tuesday night. We are going to be allocating a lot of it to learning strategies to help close the gaps in learning. I would also like to see us put it towards staff that will help make available smaller group learning opportunities for those high achievers, to challenge them a little bit more, as well as maybe students who need a little bit of help coming back up. To hire some resources, new resources for social emotional learning, like Audrey mentioned, or growth. Because that is a very, very big need in our district. We've got so many students suffering. And it's, it's very, it's a, it's a very big gap that we have. Technology is, I feel like it's pretty strong. We, a little bit more in security of our technology. So we'd like to see it put towards curriculum as much as we can and the resources that the teachers may need to do their job efficiently and get consistent learning across. No matter what teacher you have in English 10, you have the same learning. And then building safety and security is, is very critical, especially this time. So we're working on part of that right now, but definitely making it so that when we send our students and our staff into those buildings every day, that they return home safely at night. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Amy Hughes with the same question.
Yes, I would like to see the funds used for a variety of different ways as well with maybe increasing staff, increasing help for the students that need it, finding out where the, which ones need more help and maybe after school or pulling them out of classes to give them individual and one-on-one help. The smaller class sizes again, maybe using that money to get more staff or creating the spaces within the school to have smaller class sizes. Just meeting the mental needs of the kids and maybe speech therapy for a lot of the younger ones who I believe are needing that right now. I know there's a financial team that I'm sure would be presenting ideas and ways to, to use that money as well that we would all be looking at and researching and agreeing on ways to put that money to good use in all of the schools.
Okay, great. Thank you. Jim, how should we invest the money? Sorry, Jim, you're on mute right now.
See, I'm, I'm the one that you said you were going to have to tell. Everybody getting the joke. That's good. So the Essar funds, as, as of last Friday, we thought could only be used for certain things. And then of course, as Michelle mentioned, last Tuesday, we found out that it's not carte blanche, but, but we can use it for many things. Such as, as you've all mentioned, children with disabilities, the English learners, helping with mental stress that the kids have gone through over the last couple of years and staff. Lower class, teacher to pupil ratio. Also to make our air quality in the schools better, which actually helps learning too. And that's one thing that we're actually working on right now. Helping the homeless, also for foster care, the students' LG BTQ. And I guess I'll just stop right there. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. And we'll go to Kathy Myers with the same question regarding money.
So a lot of what I'm going to say has already been said, but I, what I love about this question is that it focuses on really what the board does. You know, the board, we're laypeople mostly and we are in charge of dispensing resources. I mean, probably next to selecting the new superintendent, it's one of the most important things that we could decide. And so, you know, we, we, we leave it to our teachers to teach and then, but we make it possible. We leave it to our custodians to keep the place clean and our, you know, capital improvements done with our maintenance folks. But, but we make it possible. And so, you know, I would echo a lot of what they said about closing learning gaps and providing for all the variety of needs that we have in the district. And that includes, I think I mentioned already, before and after school programs for tutoring, improved materials. I think we need to hire more teachers so that we can keep class sizes as low as possible. We need to make sure that we continue our robust support services for our students to meet all of their needs. And of course, you know, we can't forget, and Jim sort of mentioned this, the whole idea behind our capital improvements, things like the air quality and making sure that that is, you know, in the best condition it possibly can be in, which of course improves the health and safety of our environment for, for our students. And of course, to help our custodial staff and making sure that our buildings are, again, a safe and healthy place.
And thank you very much. Okay, we're going on to a new question and we start with Michelle Hayward. You heard a little bit about transparency tonight, a little earlier. And, and often we hear candidates say they want to be transparent and accountable to the public and, and that's good. What does that mean to you and how do you make it a reality?
I feel like I make transparency a reality by, as in my role as a parent, because that brings me many perspectives. A parent of students in multiple schools, different levels, as a board member. So I'm able to talk to people in different circles. I can talk to the teachers, the principals, administration, you know, people in the community that I might interact with at church or at, in different organizations that I'm in. And being transparent means just being able to listen to them and take it as an input as you form a decision or perspective on something. I would not ever go into something closed minded, definitely taking in everything that I can as an input and see, try to get a full understanding. That would be my definition of transparency. As a, as a candidate and board member is always just being able, willing, I should say, to listen.
Very good. Okay, great. Thank you very much. We're going to Amy Hughes with the same question.
I would also say maybe having listening sessions or ways that people could talk to me one-on-one or in a forum to ask questions and maybe ask why I voted a certain way or why I did what I did, that I would be very forthcoming with it and honest about why I got to the conclusion that I did and what research I did and everything that I weighed and just that parents and community members would feel heard. And, you know, might not be able to solve every problem that they would bring to me or bring to the board, but make sure they've gone through the chain of command as well, if, if it's an issue that they need to talk to a teacher or administrator or other parent about first. You know, the board can't solve everything that a parent or a community member would bring to us. But just listening to, to them and making sure that they feel that they can voice their concerns, I think is very important.
Great. Thank you. Jim, going to you regarding transparency, accountability. What does that mean to you and how can we make it a reality?
Well, that's a good question. Actually, a lot of us, I'm sure, go into the buildings and we talk to a lot of staff throughout the year. Having them feel comfortable enough to talk to us is definitely part of transparency. And as Michelle said, being able to listen. I think that having listening sessions, as Amy had said, is a, is a good idea. We did that some years ago. And also adding to meet and confers, I think, is something that we should bring back again. Because that brings all stakeholders to the table, face to face, as you guys were mentioning earlier. And able to hopefully iron out some problems and, and come up with some, with some good solutions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jim. Kathy Myers, same question.
Sure. So as, as board president, I think that the way that the meetings are run are obviously designed to try to make sure that everything is open and transparent as possible. So I do try to make sure that all board members have a chance to speak their mind. And I, you know, I try not to close off discussion. I mean, that's, that's part of our job, you know, is to be a deliberative, you know, body and to make policy decisions after we have considered all sorts of facets of a problem. And it's also important because by allowing all of our board members to speak if they choose and air their opinions, that people understand then why they voted the way they do. All, most of our board meetings, people will say, well, I'm going to vote that way or this way because of, of, you know, this, that and the other thing. I like the idea of meet and confers. I would love to bring those back. And obviously, we like to use, the district likes to use surveys and other sorts of, you know, tools to help communicate with staff and with the public. I think also just being a community member, you know, I'm, I've got some organizations that I'm a part of, like Zonta, and I've got some city involvement and, you know, and I think that those things, I think, really help with transparency and communication.
Okay, thank you very much. And with the same question, we're going to Audrey Smith, if you would.
Yes, okay. So the definition of transparency for me is being accountable for your decision and being honest about what you have done. So the school board definitely has to say, when things are good and when things are bad, it's on us. I'm part of this and I am accountable for this. As a registered nurse, I am, use transparency every day with all my patients or groups of patients. And I have to be a really good listener to find out really what their, like, their problem is, to find out how then I can help them. And so again, using this skill, applying as a school board member, it's something I've been doing for a really long time. I love the idea of listening sessions. The best communicator we all know is actually the best listener. And so, you know, doing that and taking the feedback from students and parents in the community is another step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're moving on to another question. Amy Hughes will lead off on this one. Amy, how do you feel about the school choice program and should tuition dollars follow the student or stay with, within the control of the individual school system? follow the student or stay with, within the control of the individual school system?
I think we all want to be the best district that we can be and be competitive and looking around us to see what, what again is working well in other places. So we would be the choice for parents. I, I would have to research a little more and look into that and see all the options, but I, I do think parents should be able to take that tax money that's coming in and, and be able to use it where they would want to. And I, I do hope they would choose Janesville School District, like I said, as, as we need to be competitive and a place that they would want to come. Um, and if we are losing enrollment or parents are not choosing to come here, again, why? And what can we look into and, and do better to make it a place that they would want to come?
Great, thank you. All right, Jim, we're going to you with that question.
Um, school choice is, well, something that we've actually, we've actually gained and we've lost because when you have open enrollment, kids can opt out or they can opt in. And over the last couple of years, we've actually had more people opt in than opt out, which, which was nice, but that's of course because we have, um, the charter schools and we also have the virtual academy, which was, went huge when, of course, COVID took over because I mean, they went from about 500 kids to over 2,000. You know, so that, um, that I'm sure helped. And also as far as the money staying, a portion of the money does stay with the district. However, I wish, um, that more of the money would stay with the district. So I guess I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay, great. Jim, thank you very much. Now we're going to Kathy Myers with the same question.
So it's kind of an awkward, uh, question for me because while, you know, I tend to believe that school choice can be very devastating for some districts, especially smaller districts and, and it could even hurt, uh, Janesville. Um, we've actually done pretty well with school choice. Um, as Jim mentioned, we've got more people coming in um, than going out and, uh, you know, but, um, it is, um, it's, 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 it can be quite dicey, I guess you could say, and, uh, but you know, the onus is on us, whether we have school choice or not, to provide the kind of, uh, curricular, um, opportunities and experiences um, that, that meet the needs of a variety of students. And again, we should be doing that whether we are worried about students leaving or trying to entice them to come to our district. Um, and so in Janesville, we have a lot of wonderful opportunities that help, uh, meet the needs of, of the varied needs of our students and, and interests too. We've got all sorts of pathways. We have different charter schools, we have virtual option, you know, so, um, so, you know, it, I guess you could say it's, it's kind of helped us. Um, just because we are the kind of district that can do a lot of different things. Um, I tend to also though believe that, um, that the, the money should follow the child. I do. I think that, although I know that it probably help our district, uh, but I do believe that, um, that the impact it could have on districts, uh, or, um, you know, it's so if a child moves to another district, I think that, um, it should, uh, it should go there so that child can be served to the, um, level that they should be.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Kathy. Uh, let's go to, um, Audrey Smith. School choice program, should tuition dollars follow the student or stay within the control of the system?
Okay, so school choice is a tough one because I would want everybody to choose Janesville School District. You know, but then it doesn't, it's not one size fits all. So you have to honor what a parent thinks is best for their child and what that student wants to, because they can be advocates for themselves. And even though, you know, it kind of breaks my heart that they could make that choice not to be here, I do believe the money should follow that student. It just makes sense. They will need support wherever they go and we have to be open to that idea. It's kind of just simple as that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Michelle Hayworth, same question.
I think that open enrollment is definitely a strength of our district. As it has been said before, we do have a net positive the last several years. And I think it's on us as a board to make sure that always our district is a, um, is someone or is a district that's attracting and is a, is something, somewhere everybody wants to get to. You know, we do have to say no to some kids, um, depending on some of the needs of students, we can't always say yes. We don't always have the resources to support them. Um, but when we can, we always try to say yes. And I want us to be a destination district that has opportunities for those that want to do, um, extended learning, they, if they want to do on the job training or those that may want to choose one of our many wonderful charter schools. We've got Rock University or even a virtual academy that different students might thrive in different environments. And so I, I do support open enrollment. Um, and I want us to be the destination, like all, like everybody else has already said. With a budget, it's really hard. Um, like I said, we can't say yes to everybody, um, but, uh, we do want as many as we can and, and it's, yeah, I think it, it should follow the student because we all know how much it costs. You know, when you're behind the scenes and you can see how much it costs to run a district, um, you can see that the money is needed to support each student and you don't want to take that away from the district so that they don't have the best service they can give.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. Jim Millard, we're going to you first on this one. We're going to lighten it up a little bit. What decision or action taken by the current board that you serve on made you stand up and applaud for everyone for a job well done?
Boy, oh, boy. You know, I guess, I think the, the, this will surprise a lot of you. I think it's, it's the mask mandate. I think as of last Tuesday, after all, Michelle, Kathy and myself and our community has been through with all the, uh, uh, favorite emails and unfavored emails. Um, I think finally, having the numbers go down far enough where, where we could actually go mask optional. I think we all breathed a big sigh of relief. And if we could have, I think we all would have stood up and clapped and thanked, thank heaven, it's finally getting over. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jim. Kathy Myers.
So I would add to what Jim said, uh, that, you know, we, we, we followed, uh, the data, uh, as he was saying, and we, um, put our students', um, health and safety, uh, you know, at the forefront and it was incredibly difficult. And, um, and, and it wasn't, uh, it wasn't pleasant, but that's, that's the job. And the job is hard and the job requires hard decisions. And, um, but I'd like to also add to what Jim said, um, you know, when, when COVID first happened, um, boy, I just remember that Friday, it was Friday the 13th. And I'm listening to the radio and I'm getting texts from my own school district and, and the Janesville's district and I'm like, oh my gosh. And the fact that, you know, it wasn't perfect and, um, but the ability to take such a large, you know, organization and turn it like that, um, to meet those needs, um, you know, and, and especially when you think about all those kids that we have on free and reduced lunch and we fed them. We fed them. I've never been so proud of a community for, you know, stepping up. Um, and so I would say that, you know, we, we learned a lot. We learned things that worked and didn't work. And, you know, I mentioned the metacognitive sort of activity that we've been through since, as we are, you know, measuring how we're doing and thinking about ways we could do things better. So I'm, I would have to say that that's my, my proudest, I'm most proud of the district for that.
All right. Thank you, Kathy. And we're going to Audrey Smith about the same question.
Yes, it's going to be an echo answer as well, is that we were watching it live as well, as well as my two children. And when the board decided to end the mask mandate, I mean, just tears of joy that as a parent and as a student, you get to make your own choice. And so that, we're finally this, which means that we're at the end of the pandemic, like there's light at the end of the tunnel, things will be changing and we're getting back to normal. Um, I went on the first field trip with my son, um, the very next day and it's been since 2019 on a field trip. So field trip and, and then ending the mask mandate was a great week. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Michelle Hayworth.
Well, no one probably fought harder for mask optional than myself because, uh, I was, uh, definitely a big advocate for that. So I was really happy about that Tuesday night. Um, but I would have to say I was most proud that when we were able to go back. Let's see, what would it have been? Not 20, 2021 school year, we were one of the very few districts that went to in-person, at least offered some in-person options. So maybe high school had to go A day, B day, that isn't optimal. And yes, you know, maybe everything didn't fall into place like we wanted to all the time. Maybe that was a little clunky with the virtual academy with the higher increase in numbers that they had to take on so quickly. But we did it and we did what we could to service the kids and keep that learning in person for those who were willing to do that and offer options for others who, uh, weren't comfortable with coming back to in-person. So not many districts in Wisconsin did that. And so that I would say, um, being student focused that year was one of our biggest, um, achievements as a district.
Great, thank you very much. And Amy Hughes, uh, what would you stand up and applaud for?
Yes, so I as well appreciated that Janesville was in person when a lot of places around us were not. Um, high school was not full-time the whole year, which I had wished they were, but I know the younger grades were. Um, so I did appreciate that. I know some schools did not go back in person the whole year. Um, and also I was a big advocate for mask optional as well. And I thank you, Michelle, for all the work that you did on the board to get us there. Um, I also, I think that the biggest thing I've seen lately is just the superintendent search. I've, I've appreciated all I've heard that's going into that and, and how the board is all working together to find us the best superintendent. And, um, yeah, that's what I would say. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, we're going to Kathy Myers first on, on this question. So we're going to take the alternative. Is there an issue that was acted upon by the current officials, you know, that would be yourself in, included of course, in which you wished it would have gone differently or you would have taken maybe a different stance and provided an alternative to what was finally implemented?
Are, are you talking about, um, the COVID response or in, in general?
You could really take this in any direction, Kathy, that it's, feels relevant.
Well, I, I, I guess, um, I, I was thinking about, uh, the first thing that popped in my head actually was, um, many years ago when, um, when the health insurance is a huge issue. It is complicated and I get, um, I get, uh, I don't know, heartburn every year about this time as we have to sit down with the numbers and our consultants and figure out how we're going to provide great health insurance for our employees, which I, they deserve. And they should, and everybody should have actually. And so I'm thinking back to a, um, a moment when for a couple of months, we instituted sort of a penalty on our faculty members who did not take insurance um, from, uh, their spouse if they could. And so it was a surcharge that we imposed. And of course, it was supposed to, um, encourage them to jump ship from our insurance and help us cut costs and go to the other insurance. And so, um, I, I didn't like that. I didn't like that approach. Um, and again, I understand that insurance is a very difficult, um, thing to have to deal with. And, um, there's all sorts of, uh, there's all sorts of methods, but, um, but I was really upset with that and I was very proud to see that after a couple of months, um, we, uh, changed and we, we rescinded that, um, that policy. And I, and, and since then, we've been able to follow at, follow, or excuse me, solve our problems without having to do something like that.
Great, thank you very much. Um, we'll go to, um, Audrey Smith with the same question. Is there an item you would have handled differently and why?
Yes, so I would have had the mask mandate differently. You know, that's what sticks out, obviously, the past two years, kind of hard to get past the pandemic years. We will recover from this. You know, but when I was looking at my own personal research, and again, I'm a nurse and I could offer a lot to the school board, bringing that medical background, is that, you know, when this board did decide to make it a mandate, Rock County and CDC had it as a recommendation. And when you look at other recommendations from their websites, for instance, they say it's recommended that you eat four vegetables a day. It's recommended that you exercise 30 minutes a day. We don't all do that. They recommended that children wear masks in school. Yet we all know that the school boards around Rock County District, around the state, and then you'll take it out further and further through the US, throughout the US, were voting differently on this. So I would have looked at my local county and my CDC recommendations and I would have followed those guidelines.
Okay, great. Thank, thank you very much. Let's go to, uh, Michelle Hayworth on the same question.
Thank you. I can't recall the exact scenario, but all I remember was being very frustrated that we had spent money on something. And, um, all I could think of was that's, that's a teacher, that's a salary of a teacher or that's, you know, that could go towards this much, this many textbooks or, or this much of a curriculum program. Um, because it was just money that I didn't feel like we had to do. So that's something I always kind of keep my eye on is any dollar that we spend means one more dollar that might not be spent on our students.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. And, uh, Amy Hughes.
I have to also say the, the mask mandate, I, I wish we had been mask optional, um, the whole time and I, looking at districts, I know, for example, Waukesha, January of 21, they came back in person, full-time high school. They did not have a mask mandate. They didn't have quarantining. And I was, I was advocating for all of those things here in Janesville as well. Um, especially after they were just a recommendation, like Audrey said, from the health department. Um, I think all of those things have contributed to why we are 404th out of 421 districts. And I think things like the, um, the children learning to read and speak correctly and not being able to see faces, I think that has all contributed to where we have some learning gap that we really need to make up for now.
Okay, thank you. Jim, we'll go to you on the same question.
I think, um, as Kathy mentioned, the health insurance some years ago when we did the surcharge, I know I definitely was against that. There didn't seem to be any option at the time. And also the way we've handled, um, using the sick days for the staff. At one time, they could use so many sick days to, uh, buy insurance for retirement. As the staff goes through their career, um, the days they can get for retirement have actually started going down. And that, that is something that I think hopefully this board will look into. Um, and hopefully decide to, if you want to retain staff, that you're going to have to do something along that line. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, we'll start with, um, Audrey Smith on this question regarding, uh, police liaisons. Um, should the board reconsider their position regarding, um, police department liaisons in the high schools or other buildings and why or why not?
Yes, thank you. I definitely think that they should consider enhancing that. Uh, due to like the recent news, we all know what's happening, you know, in other communities around us. Some students like to have the copycat feature, they call it, and then bring those things in and technology that students are using are also causing problems. I definitely think the school district, the school board should be working with police liaisons. Even my kids are at middle school and there's problems at middle school. It's not just high school anymore. We're seeing serious problems at the middle school level. I definitely think, um, you know, police presence is helpful when they are, you know, situations that arise and I, I just see that being more of a partnership and I would be a person that would be voting and working hardest to have a safe environment because children can't learn unless it's a safe place. So we start with safety first. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Michelle Hayworth, same question.
Yeah, definitely the, having a police liaison and a, a security presence is a non-negotiable for me. It, it is something that we must have in our schools. And not only from a safety perspective as far as like, you know, breaking up fights or being there to reprimand uh, incidences, but it's also someone that they could confide in. You know, some students, it's being that, being comfortable around them. And, you know, we've got some great ones. I, um, I'm not going to name them, but there, there's some really great ones in our district who make a friendship with, you know, they kind of become a, a confident of, of our students and someone that they can go to. So and I think it helps, that will help us, uh, socially and emotionally as well. If they have someone that they can talk to and feel safe around and not always be afraid of them that they're always going to do, you know, they're only, only, uh, able to go to them when something bad happens. So, um, it's definitely something that we need to have in our buildings and I'm thankful that we do.
Great, thank you, Michelle. Amy Hughes, same question, police liaisons.
Yes, I also agree. The, the police are very important in our schools. Um, I know the high schools have them. I guess I thought the middle schools did too. schools have them. I guess I thought the middle schools did too, but maybe they don't. Okay, they do. And it, it may be necessary in elementary as well. I, I think that would be something to look into, but I know for sure in high school, and maybe increasing it. I know the, the, a friend of mine is the police officer at Craig, and he's a very busy man, and he ends up being a counselor to a lot of the kids too. And I know he's very approachable, and that people can go to him all day, and he's there a lot. And it, you know, maybe lessen his workload a little bit by having a second person help him. And just having that police presence. We, Craig is a big school, Parker's a big school. It may be very necessary to increase that. And, and I do appreciate the safety measures that the district does have in place at all of the schools, even if there is not a police officer there.
Great. Thank you very much, Amy. Let's go to you, Jim Malard, same question.
That's, that's a good question. When I worked at Edison Middle School in late 80s, early 90s, we, of course, didn't have a police liaison officer. At that time, it didn't seem like we actually needed one. The vice principal or assistant principal, as you call them now, took over a, a lot of the, the disciplinary action, even, and even though that's not the only thing they do. And then when I worked at Marshall, of course, Officer Olin and I became great friends. And he does a really, really good job. And the nice thing about the middle school police liaison officers, they actually all break up into the elementary schools. So each one of them will have three or four elementary schools that they go to every month, and sit and talk to the kids. And that, and that's really a wonderful thing to do, because they can, you know, make friends with kids before they even get up into the middle school, or, you know, and it, it's always good to have their presence there, whether it's, it's like you say, for, for a problem, or just a question, you know, or someone to talk to. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you very much, Jim. And Kathy Myers, same question.
Thank you. So, you know, safety is, as a teacher, this is incredibly important to me. It's important to me for my students and, and myself, and all of my peers that I work with. And it's also one of our promises. So, you know, I think that school safety is a very complex thing. And certainly, we've done some things like with our safe pathways. Thank you to the community for helping us out with that. And, and of course, a police liaison is a part of that. And I am in favor of these liaisons, but they cannot, they must be incredibly well-trained. And because you're, you're dealing with a different clientele here. And luck, luckily, and I'm, I'm very grateful that, you know, the Janesville PD has provided us with really great resource officers. And I think that we have a great relationship with our local police force. And, you know, Mr. Moore has been a great leader in that respect. I think he really understands the whole notion of community policing. You know, the school district is a huge community, and it's part of an over, of another, you know, the rest of the community, and community policing, as Dave Moore has advocated and worked toward, is a big part of that. And so I'm very grateful to our police liaisons, and I think it's a good thing.
Very good. Thank you, Kathy. Well, we're, we've kind of gone through the lineup a few times. We're, we're going back to Michelle for closing remarks, and you, you have up to three minutes for closing remarks, if you'd like. And a 30-second notice will appear, of course, after two and a half minutes in this case. So, closing remarks, Michelle Hayward.
Thank you. I ask for your support as I run for reelection, and you have my commitment that I will make sure students are front, front of mind, and are the focus of every decision that I make. I want student and school success, and that means that we're going to get our achievement scores up. I want to make sure we have those strong relationships. We're going to have a culture where our, everybody, top-down staff and students, everybody is growing together. We're going to be fiscally responsible and making sure it's a safe environment for all. I would ask that you be intentional when you go into the ballots, and make sure that you're choosing the person and persons that have the best intention in mind. Again, I'll bring many perspectives. I'm a mom, but I'm also a businessperson, and very involved in the schools, from PTO to elevates, to cats, to other roles in the, in the community at, at my church, and that kind of a thing as well. I want our students and our staff to be proud to be here. I want our students to be proud graduates, and, and really look back on their time here fondly, and, and remember all the great opportunities that we gave them. And I want our staff to feel appreciated. I want to make sure we have the best staff. I want the highest quality staff. That's going to be my focus as well. New or tenured, I want the best quality staff. You know, I know that we can't make everybody happy. I've been doing this six years, and that's, it takes some time to build that shell. You know, we get, we hear the good and the bad and the ugly, but every day, just know that I'm going to do the best that I can with the input that I have to make the best decision for our students. And to get those, get the promises achieved for our district. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Michelle. We're going to you, Amy Hughes, closing remarks.
Thank you. Again, when I'm elected, I would ensure academic excellence to best prepare these students for life, whatever they choose to do. Financial accountability and transparency in all ways to, again, best benefit the students, and continued and increased parental involvement in the student's education and their learning environment. I want to take all of my strengths and experiences and research, hard work, to really make Janesville the best place that it can be. Our students are the future of our community and our country, and they deserve better than 404 out of 421 districts on the scorecard. Thank you very much. I appreciate your vote on April 5th.
Thank you. All right, Jim Malard.
I want to thank all of the candidates tonight. I'm very impressed with all your answers. As a matter of fact, I wrote some of them down so I can use them later. I guess, I, I agree with transparency. You all, people have to know, if you're running for the school board, you definitely have the kids at heart, because you wouldn't, you would be like a person working a GM that doesn't drive a car. You know, that's, that's just what would happen. So, of course, we all have the, the health and welfare, and we care. I think one of the biggest things is to make sure you care, and you're, as they said earlier, you're a good listener. And if I am elected, I'll certainly continue doing just exactly what we've done, which is try to make our school district the best one in the state of Wisconsin. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Kathy Myers, closing.
Sure. Thank you, Mike. And thank you to everyone that, you know, did all this work to put this together. I, you know, I've been on the board for nine years. And, and honestly, it's, it's been an honor to serve. And I think that, you know, being in public education, I, I went into it because I wanted to do meaningful work. And being on the school board is part of that, over and above actually being a classroom teacher. So, and I, and I hope I've earned your, your support over the years. And I know that, you know, not everybody's agreed with everything I've said or done. But I want you to know that it has always come from a place of trying to do what's best for our schools and our children and our families and our community. I think that I offer some perspective as a classroom teacher, and I want to continue that. I'm, I'm a huge advocate for public education and for the classroom, for everyone, students and aides and custodial staff and clerical staff and teachers. I also want us to keep the focus on our promises and take the district to the next level, and also to help the district usher in this new chapter that we have with the new superintendent. And so, you know, thank you again for this opportunity, and I, I just really appreciate it. And I hope I've earned your, your vote and your respect. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy. And Audrey Smith, your closing remarks.
Yes. Thank you, Mike Allen Rich and the Westgate Corridor for hosting this event, so we could all share all our answers tonight. That's super important to us. So I feel that I have the life experience and skills to bring to the school board, to be a really valuable, effective member of the board. I believe that the school district, students, and parents act like a triad, and we all have to work together for one goal. The outcome is have the best education and have them ready for one of four things. I want my two kids to be ready to either enter the workforce, be ready for the military, for the trades, or for a college. And when I look at the current DPI scorecard at the proficiency rates, currently, we're at 35% for English and at 30% for math. And for me, this needs to change. So I believe a school board definitely has an obligation to provide resources and interventions. It is our job to break down barriers to student learning. I really do care about this community and want to be the next person to serve on the board. And lastly, vote for Audrey Smith on April 5th. Thank you.
Great. Well, thank you. And, and thank you all very much for your well-thought-out responses. This concludes the Janesville School Board Forum, and we hope that this discussion has aided in the viewer's discernment process, and, and that they'll get out and vote on April 5th. Thanks to the Westgate Corridor and Rock County First for hosting, and JATV for televising tonight's event. We also want to thank each of you for participating in the election process. This has been Mike O'Brien, along with Laura Peterson, with hopes that you'll stay healthy, happy, and well-informed in the days ahead.
Thank you.
Thank you.